Okay, welcome everyone to the March 28th work session of the Penn Field Planning Board. Allison, please call the roll.
Hetske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Canauer.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nursing.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Weisar.
Here.
Alright, streaming live.
Here we go.
Pennfield.org.
Let's go.
Right, that's how you get it?
And on Facebook.
And on Facebook?
Youtube.
Sweet.
We're all over the world, man.
Worldwide, worldwide streaming tonight. So, all you people into that, pay attention.
Is that a shock with that?
No, 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 no. They have Wi-Fi.
They got better air than us.
Yeah. Alright, so we have meetings that we got this week, hopefully minutes. Hopefully everyone can have a chance to take a look at them and read them and maybe we can entertain a motion to approve them.
Right, to motion to approve.
Alright.
One second.
Tidings and Bastian.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Here.
Yeah. We're here, Terry.
How's that coffee?
Just so you know. Yeah, nice job on those, Allison. Okay. Want to take over the agenda? Yeah.
Sure. We have five, we've got a lot of table items tonight, five table items tonight, three action items at the end, but first I would like to just take care of the Wilburts' application first, which means Burton and Canauer get to recuse themselves for a moment.
Alright, don't go too far.
Okay, so we don't need to pull anything up tonight, what's good, just want to give you a quick update with the project is that they are on schedule to have a zoning board meeting on the 18th for the request for an expansion to the pre-existing non-conform use. So that will take place then, and staff will begin organizing a site tour for both boards after that meeting.
Okay.
Have some nicer weather, tour the facilities, keep that moving. In the meantime, we did recently receive revised site plans in responses to comments, however, we have not had a chance to review them with staff. We'd like to do that and get those comments back to you for the April 11th meeting. So unless there are any questions from the board, excuse me, you can entertain a motion to continue table.
Make a motion to table it, yep.
Second.
I'm sorry, second invite. Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton. Oh, sorry.
Recused.
Tidings.
Aye.
Alright, next. These guys can come back?
One can, I think.
Bob can.
Next application is for, again, two quick updates for these ones, not really any action by the board as required tonight. I'll go to Scribner Road, if you don't mind, Doug. We had an application for Scribner Road for a cluster subdivision, 15 lots at the last public hearing. We did receive revised, I'm sorry, responses to comments, written responses to comments. They are still working on the revised plans. However, I did have a conversation with the developer today and just wanted to update the board regarding sidewalks and their landscape plan. With the landscape plan, they are going to provide a dedicated plan for us to review in terms of a replanting plan for the project, buffering neighbors, so they are working on that along with the street trees. Also, with regards to sidewalks, we reviewed sidewalk policy with them and they do want to seek a waiver, however, the waiver is for only one side internal. They do propose to inside the other side internal, the frontage, and would offer the connection to the crosswalk to install that piece of sidewalk in that gap. The town would be responsible for securing the rights to do it, any necessary easements, so on and so forth, but they would offer that connection. So that waiver request would go before the town board, I just wanted to hear the board's thoughts to see if everyone was supportive of that.
Exactly what we were looking for.
Sure.
With that being said, we have no other updates until we get the revised site plans. So are there any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Continue table.
You can entertain a vote.
Do you want to move to continue table?
Move to continue.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Okay.
Next one is for Crown Point, Section 4. Same update basically, is that we only got responses to written comments right now. We are waiting on the revised plans to come in for that project, they're still reviewing the stormwater management facility that would go with the project, mainly its location at this point and access to it, whether it's an easement or dedicated land, so we are reviewing that with the engineers. So until then, I don't have any more updates and I expect to see some plans probably next week or the week after in advance of the April meeting.
Motion to continue tabling that application.
What's the second?
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
And just the overall plan is all we need, we need to show setbacks. So I'm going to skip quick to application, the application for Panorama Office Park. This is a brief update and a couple of points of clarity, actually. They are still working on their revised site plans, we again have written responses to comments. We also received our traffic consultants' initial review of their traffic impact study. Those comments are updated for you and we have sent those back to the applicant. So that's in the works right now, engineers are reviewing that. The update that I have is, we reviewed the zoning district coordinates for the limited industrial zoning district that we have there and, oh hello.
That's me, sorry.
Okay. What we discovered is, and this just shows, it's been a while since we've had any develop in the LI district, is that setbacks to these types of developments are measured not from just property boundaries, but district boundaries, actually. So when we reviewed this in the public hearing, it was referenced that there were 100-foot setbacks along the dedicated road that was being proposed, so on and so forth. When you read the code, that 100-foot actually applies to the district boundaries, not the proposed properties that they're creating. In effect, you really have a lot of flexibility with what those setbacks then are for the project on that dedicated road. Therefore, they don't need as.
You can have zero setbacks.
As needed, correct.
Adjacent properties in the LI district.
Correct, if they are LI to LI.
Right.
Yep. They would still have to maintain the 150-foot buffer to the residential, which Doug is highlighting right now, they're going to revise the one to the mobile home zoning district there. That's going to, that's showing at the 100, that's going to be revised to 150, and they're only requiring 50 to the GV, which is where Popeyes is located. So these setback lines that we see are going to be modified in the next round of plans, I just wanted to update the board with that and if they do not require anything from zoning board as part of this application.
Do they propose to modify any proposed building pads or anything like that based on this?
No. What they showed on the plan is, again, those, what could be, I'll use the word Jim had, that concept, view of what, how the buildings in the square footage would be split up, this preliminary view of it, basically. The all villas complied with the buffer requirements, so we don't expect any of this view to change at this time.
Change.
Until, like they said, once they're getting to final build out and they need to come back for final site plan approval and we know what the buildings are going to look like and be situated as, based on the square footage they need for each one, then we'll know if they need any variances at that time. So they're not requesting anything from zoning board.
So there's no site setbacks, no front setbacks, as long as they're within the LI?
As long as it complies with district boundaries and the setbacks that go with those.
So they have a lot of flexibility.
Correct. The key is buffering, the surrounding zoning districts from those uses. So that was clarified with the applicant and staff and now with the board. I don't have any other updates right now as part of this. Do you guys have any questions for us?
No, no. Next meeting, we should be able to vote on lead agency?
I wish. No. 30 days will not conclude until the 18th.
Okay.
So it will be our second meeting in April that we'll be able to declare lead agency.
Yeah, for the record, I won't be here on the 11th.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a conflict with another community meeting.
So then the lead agency process goes on for seeker and we can talk more about it on the 11th when we expect to have some revised site plans for you to review.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay.
I'll move to table.
Second. I have Bastian first on that one.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Alright.
Okay. Back of step and we'll go to the Lupo-Ravino subdivision sketch plan that was heard at the last meeting. We left the meeting having both the conceptual, the conventional plan and the cluster plan being presented to the board and basically going to take some soak time, we've had that now, to both hear, hear the public comments and to review the information for this project and start formulating our thoughts on some of the lots that they provoked, that they provided plot plans for to kind of review that, what is a usable lot area. So I think tonight, good opportunity to jump back into the conventional plan and have a discussion about what the board feels is appropriate as, you know, again, a conventional plan has to be something that one could potentially build, even though this project is for a cluster subdivision, but we do need to establish the lot density here.
Right.
So.
Can you bring up both? So we have the conventional here in front of us printed out in a larger format.
With some of my Creed coloring methods. There are a couple of comments I wanted to bring up for the board.
Go for it.
Okay. The first one is the matter of stormwater management facilities. What I, and we can show it on the plan when Adobe wants its color theme picked. Alright, so what we see on the plan here, you have about four different areas dedicated right now.
North is to the right.
North is to the right. And Doug, if you can zoom in to show the stormwater management facilities, oh, you don't have your magnifying lens yet. So that's one example of it, there's four of those. And as you see, they're all proposed to be basically in the rear yards of a lot of the properties. Again, conventional, but it's been our, it's been our policy with the last few projects where the stormwater management facility, while these will likely handle, they've been sized to handle the development under conventional, and for cluster, they're just spread out here and not on a piece of dedicated land, unlike our other subdivisions in the past where the conventional plan showed a dedicated plot of land for the appropriately sized management facility. That is the first thing I wanted to ask the board is, do you feel that, or would you agree to having that as an amendment to this plan? Having the storm yard shown as one item, on one lot, rather than in the back of these one acre lots that are being shown? Or are you comfortable with this approach?
If it's approached that way, what's the maintenance required or potential maintenance?
Well, as proposed under cluster, the land, it is going to be one.
Right.
Contiguous piece of, like a pond, basically, one contiguous facility on a dedicated piece of land to the town, right in the middle, and Doug's showing it here on this area. Yep.
Oh, it's over there.
It would be highlighted in that area. So again, that would be dedicated on town land, again, similar to how we did Windsor Ridge, for example. The difference with this conventional plan versus what you approved with, or with what you accepted for Windsor Ridge is that the storm yard management facility was on its own piece of property. And then the lots were laid out after that, and that was something we had to go through twice because the first time it was too small, then it got bigger, then the plan was adjusted and we eventually settled on an acceptable conventional plan. So I wanted to bring that topic up first and let you guys have a discussion about that.
So I think Bob, you mentioned all the maintenance requirements, because on the first one, you showed the two acre, that's a lot, one, two, three, four, six different lots it touches, and that's only one, there's four of them, right? So those owners of those lots, are they going to be responsible for maintaining? I mean, how does that?
If something were built like this, we would have to find, it would likely be an easement, would have to be the only way we could get to it, through, find the best means of access between properties to be able to maintain those or at least inspect them. But under this, they're not showing them to be dedicated to the town.
So I think, who would be responsible for maintaining it?
Under those, we'd probably have to have a special improvement district and.
Yeah, it's, because we have to think on a conventional plan at this point.
Right.
You know, on private land, under an easement, I don't know how many instances there are, Mike, with ponds that, those are usually private.
Those are private ponds that we have them maintain and take care of and.
Send us reports.
Right.
So they would be private.
I can't remember the last time we did that for the main stormwater management.
Because we're comparing what could be built under conventional.
Right, but what we're trying to do is establish density and.
Well, and that's, this gets back to the heart of the problem here, which is the depth of the water table, how many stormwater structures are really needed to maintain stormwater here? You know, whether or not full basements are appropriate design element for these.
Agreed.
For these buildings, we've got all these individual ejector pumps and we, so there's a, there's a bunch of issues here that would have to underline whether or not this is a constructible design convention.
And I think that supports kind of the approach the board took with Windsor Ridge, it was consolidating the stormwater management to an appropriately sized lot to handle, handle the development. On the conventional plan.
Because this right here creates nothing but problems for the people that end up owning those.
Living here.
Alright, so the question is, would, would we, do we think we would, that this is an actual, with all these dispersed stormwater locations, is that even a viable project? The way it's.
Probably not.
Probably not. It's not something we would be in favor of for sure because it just, we run into a lot of issues with these, with privately made ponds, privately owned ponds.
Well, this is, this is a conceptional.
It is, it is.
We don't have an engineer's report.
No, no, no.
Correct. So we have to do our.
Hypothetical situation.
Yeah, best guess, so, alright, would we approve that? I'm going to say we probably wouldn't approve that.
I'm going to say I agree with you.
So what I'm hearing, to try and resolve that, is that the conventional plan should be updated to show stormwater on one lot.
Consolidated location.
Yep. Okay.
How do we address the water table issues in?
Those are things that are.
That's another item, I mean, once we settle on whether or not cluster's appropriate and what that density might be, then we can get to those underlying issues, I guess.
Yes, but we would need to see the density calcs for that almost ahead of time in the conventional plan.
Well, they've done some initial deep, initial deep hole tests, which was captured during the public hearing, it wasn't all of them, but it was enough to at least get a handle on stormwater management and what will be required. So I think they have enough data to go forward with, alright, we know how much quantity we have to deal with to size it accordingly, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's how this has been laid out. So I don't think you need to get too deep into that, that's something that they're usually tasked with when it comes to preliminary final designs in terms of all that geotech information.
Well, I think at this point, we rely on Mark and Mike to tell us when we get the revised plan back.
Yeah.
Whether or not the.
Oh, yeah.
The area of the drainage structure is appropriate for the worst-case scenario for high water table in that part of town.
And that's what we would do, we would, once the revised conventional plan comes back in, we confirm it's the appropriate size and move forward from there. Anywhere?
I just, you know, in terms of establishing density, I want us to be careful about this because, you know, ultimately, we approve the number of lots on the conventional plan, that translates over into the 278 plan.
Right.
And what are we shackling homeowner with?
Well, I think, I think we agreed in our, in our workshop two weeks ago after the public hearing that we certainly don't need any more residential subdivisions that have, you know, water intrusion problems in basements, and this one's got the added burden of having ejector pumps in each dwelling. So, you know, I think, you know, again, we rely on staff to, to take those things into consideration in terms of density and, you know, this is, this is a tough piece of land.
You know, what's considered viable?
Well, I think this, this helps get you started there. You know, right now, you're looking at, on this map, on this conventional plan here, you have, they've mapped the existing wetlands, the mitigation areas, we just talked about the stormwater management facilities. You know, one thing that you got to look at with the, just keeping it simple with the number of lots first, you know, they might discover something along the way when they get deeper into the engineering that addresses your concern.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, okay, well, we have to change something here and, and we'll address it then. But in terms of this, we kind of, we look at some of these lots that have been proposed with, you know, real tight, a couple of them, and they, again, they provided some plot plans that are zoomed in to help us with this. I'll use lot, where am I going here? I'll use Lot 54 as an example, you're right there now, Doug, thank you. It's a lot that, while they went ahead and showed us kind of a very close, you can actually just leave it right there. Because that turns it and it gets in different directions. Oh, now you're in tab city. Can you go back to the site plan you had? Conventional, I'm sorry, thank you. They've gone and gave us a pretty good estimate of what a house pad would look like, they're painting a picture of what that usable, usable yard is on a one acre property, meets the lot width, so on and so forth, but you have a very, very shallow backyard and a lot that's covered by a wetland.
Right.
Those are the things, is this a practical lot that the board would approve?
No.
Typically no. So, you know, there's other areas where there are wetlands present on the lots, but they do have more of a serviceable, more of a recreation or, or usable backyard, just the lots next door to it have more depth there, closer to 50, closer to 50 feet of a backyard before they hit what would be a mitigated. Wetland area. Because that's, again, the crosshatches, wetland area that would be created under this conventional plan, if it were to, if it were ever built.
Right.
So staff had a question about that with the board, then there was another one, where to go? Bear with me, Doug.
Thank you.
Lot 57 is actually right next door, is a couple down from that. This zoom out, actually, I need to see the whole thing. One thing that hasn't been addressed on this one is that when we measure lot width, it's based on the front door of the structure, the front of the structure. This one doesn't have a dimension, but if you scale it, it's less than 150 foot wide and the zoning district requires 150 foot wide. You could re, you could reorientate the house so that if you draw a dimension, you get 150 foot, which means you're going to take it, turn it off counterclockwise a little bit. Yes, the house finds a way to meet the 150, but on that current flat lot configuration, you put the backyard almost into the existing wetland.
Right.
So there might be a way for the developer to, or I'm sorry, for the applicant, to reconfigure the conventional plan to address that, now that we're kind of going, we're going down the path of what's addressed the stormwater management area and adjust the rest of the lots as needed. But that's something I think, where we as staff think should be addressed with the revisions. Because otherwise, we wouldn't be supportive of, of that as an acceptable flat lot.
Correct.
And one other one that popped up, and I'll, again, this is for the board's discretion, is Lot 50, oh, Lot 46. It's, call it a dog bone or a bow tie or however you want to call the configuration. You have a house situated at, again, the north side of that, what that property would be. It has a rear yard drainage area, the drainage ditch, that was the kind of like the creek, the stream that was mentioned during the public hearing that carries drainage north. That alone is going to have a 75-foot buffer in there to minimize any disturbances in that buffer, it's one of our EPods, and then you have the residual space as part of a wetland area. So again, that's a tough lot in terms of the configuration, which our recommendation is that it would be revised with a conventional plan to make it a more practical lot, but I'll leave that up to the board.
I think for that lot configuration, it would be a burden on the homeowner for having that on, as part of their parcel. You know, liability, just use of the area, they can't use it.
Yeah, wetlands, as we know, are very restrictive. It's a federally, federal wetland area.
So do we respond to them, that this is what we want to see, the reconfiguration, showing a senoned stormwater management facility? I think what we need now is a, is a motion to request that staff put together a letter for the applicant.
It would be, I would take, it's a letter or almost like a, basically kind of like a tabling resolution at this point, unless you want.
Well, it's still a sketch plan.
It's still sketch, yeah.
So it's a sketch letter.
Are we saying?
It's like a part one sketch letter, if you will, because you're still going to have to review the conventional plan after that.
Right. But are we saying we're not going to accept any lots that have wetland on them or greater than 50% of the lot?
Not, not that far.
We'll leave that up to them and see what they come back with. Well, you know, if we could give them some guidance or it's.
Reconfigure the, the conventional plan is not a plan that we would approve today to calculate density.
Can you go to the lot layout?
And delineate some of the reasons why, and then they can come back and reconfigure it.
This lot would not be acceptable for this reason and this lot.
Right.
Five, one more.
Right.
For the wetland areas, it'd be a big deal.
I'll use this as an example for you to help with the guidance bill. Yes, you can have wetlands on your property, but it comes down to, where did we just go? Keep it there, please. So here's 55, which is next door to that Lot 54, you can see it on the map there.
Right.
Of a much, a very much different backyard situation. Here, there's a minimum of 50 feet, which we think is completely acceptable in terms of a lot layout, even with wetlands on it, that's already created there. So perhaps that might be that guiding number you're looking for, Bill, where you should have an acceptable, an acceptable backyard of something about 50 feet or approximately 50 feet of practical, usable, unrestricted space.
First, this lot, what lot number is that?
This is 54, which is just next to it. And this is the one that was located up on Jackson, but there, this is the area we were talking about.
So the Innassans have no backyard that they could use?
Yeah, they had.
54, doesn't it?
54 had 40 feet to that, to that area, to that area that's boxed out there.
Because in the past, I think, we have lots that are wetland in.
Cause in the past, I think when we had lots that, uh, the wetland encroaches on, we'd put markers identifying, this is where the boundary of the wetland is. You can't do anything.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, you know, and exactly, so if we take that, that a step further, we look at the cluster plan where on, uh, lot 75 currently is the large, uh, corner lot at Plankton Jackson that has, basically, the wetlands kinda delineate that lot. And that's where we start implementing those border, those, uh, those markers, placards to say, "Wetlands keep out."
Uh-huh.
And it would have to be applied to something like this, too.
Part of this is still gonna hinge on the issue of whether or not we're gonna permit basements here, where the finished floor elevations are going to be relative to the elevations of the drainage structures and the wetland areas.
Right.
Well, and that's tasked to them to, you know, they would have to fix, address that following the sketch plan. Um, you know, if you allow them to continue forward, is that, that's one of the big-ticket items of the sketch plan is for them to review and confirm, uh, how basements would be installed here, or if it's not, uh, feasible.
Right. Okay. Anything else on this?
Uh, no, those are the items I had. I don't know if, I don't know, had the applicants in the audience if you had any questions for them tonight, but there aren't any. I can put together this, like, I'll say a first response type, uh, letter for the applicant so they can consider that, review it, um, address the conventional plan, and then, uh, come back for the April 11th meeting for the board to review it and potentially issue a final sketch letter.
Yeah. I think, I think that'll work.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right. Somebody wanna move?
I think they did.
I'll second.
Burton moved. Good hour, seconded.
Thank you. Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Mauer?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi. I just wanted to mention that also, uh, you guys didn't see it. Conservation Board did send us a.
Yep.
Recommendation. Take a look at it.
Yep. Thank you, Terry. Okay. That concludes that item. I have, that concludes all the table items for the evening. We have three, uh, action items that came in, and I can address those now for you.
All righty.
The first one is for the new Verizon store that was just constructed on Empire Boulevard, adjacent to Baytown Plaza. They, uh, they came to us with, you start with a letter sneak pre, sneak preview there. Gotta get used to this, uh, lack of Adobe Pro life.
Yeah, I forgot to set the default.
License to Adobe Pro?
Yeah, we give it to our admin.
That's all. So, uh, we have them. We need more.
Allison up here driving the, uh, train, then?
Cause they're all on desktops, not laptops anymore. Um, so here's a letter we received from, uh, from the property owner explaining what took place. And it does a good job explaining because I recall going back to that site plan approval, that the plan was to provide a consolidated dumpster enclosure for both this building, uh, which is up and half of it's occupied for Verizon, along with, uh, the future buildings for Baytown Plaza, the one closest known as Building P, where Doug is highlighting, where, here we go. Um, this letter explains it such that the dumpster enclosure that went up, so we didn't really wanna alarm people with this, it's kind of temporary in its nature. It's pressure-treated, fenced in, uh, it, it does enclose all the refuse and it meets the code, uh, but the site plan's called for a, um, a block, uh, for masonry, um, enclosure. Why I lost that word. So, as the letter explains, uh, they're proposing to review the consolidated dumpster area and readdress it when Building P comes in. I just wanted to bring that to the board tonight so that everyone's acknowledging on board with this temporary solution for the wooden fence enclosure versus the masonry enclosure, and if there were any questions or concerns with that.
Do we know the timeframe? Is there like an expiration?
I do not know the timeframe of that, no. I know they're, they're trying to get most of the plaza filled in before they go and start building another building for it.
So, you know, a year, two years?
We can.
The plan's called for it to be, you know, in the concrete, right?
Correct.
So, you could, um, you know, require them to do the concrete, you know, now, or you could say, you could do this, uh, you know, give them a timeline, say, come back.
As my question, should you have asked first before you went to the, the consultant, anybody from the town to see if it's temporary?
We were performing our usual inspections of the site because we knew that one of the final things for that project was, uh, establishing the dumpster enclosure. Uh, Mike went out Monday, I think, and, um, brought it to our attention, and then we contacted them and received the correspondence and these pictures.
So, you do, you said it's a temporary structure?
Yeah, you should put a timeframe on it. You know, I mean, since someone hadn't did it anyway, so you put a timeframe on them.
So, you know, there, we talked about this, uh, a few years ago, that, uh, setting a, a condition more than a year is probably not a good idea. They can always come back and ask for an extension. So, if you wanna give them a year, that's probably an appropriate amount of time.
I think it's too much time.
Well, the other, the other card on the table.
It's not hurting anybody.
Well, the thing is, they just went and did it without, they, I mean, they should have, now, say like, like, "We don't wanna do the, the structure that you guys approved right now."
Yeah, we got Mike on the job.
Huh?
We got the man.
That's the other card on the table, Terry, that you're bringing up is that Henley Pete said you could, you have two options, accept the temporary solution, or you can require that the approved enclosure be constructed at this time.
But if we ask them, how long do you think that's gonna be for them to do it?
Just give them, I don't know, nine months. I don't know.
Bless you.
No more than a year. Yeah. Before winter.
How's everything else gone with, uh, everything else that they've done? Have they, have there been many other whoopses?
No.
Uh, you know, hey, we expected this, but got something different?
No.
No, we were just doing our, like Zach said, our routine maintenance inspection, just, uh, cause that was one of the, uh, only items that was out there that wasn't done. So, we were kinda seeing when it was gonna be built, and then we just found that.
So, would it be safe to say this is an isolated incident slash oversight or something? In the overall development of the plaza?
Right.
Or?
I mean, at least to the site, me doing the site inspections, yes, but anything else, I don't know.
Okay. So, who, you know, I take, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if you do have any questions about the timeframe of this, Alan's here in the audience tonight, if you have, if you want some more information, too.
Okay.
Um, you know, to me, it's, uh, the timeline thing is a legitimate idea. It's just settling on what's a timeline. Is it a year?
How long's it need? Well, Alan, that's the, how long you think you're gonna need?
Should I approach her?
Sure.
How long you think this is gonna be temporary, I guess?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. I mean, really, honestly, the, the building adjacent to it that we wanna do the consolidated enclosure for, for both the building we've recently constructed and the future building, really, it's gonna be dependent on the market. The, the adjacent building to it is, uh, is an office building that was, uh, constructed for medical purposes. And we're hoping that this, uh, the Building P will also be, um, an office building similar in, in look and feel to, uh, where the University of Rochester, the U of R building is now. Uh, so really, it, it, it really is totally dictated by the market. Um, we have taken some steps recently to clean up that area behind the muffler and car service shop, uh, behind Midas there. Clean up some of that green space and some drainage issues and, and such, just to, uh, make that appear a little bit better. As Paul, uh, may have mentioned, Paul Calucci from our office, you know, the, the intent of this obviously is, is temporary in nature because of the wood, but also because it's sitting on, on asphalt. There's no concrete pad that was poured there. So, the vision is, is that this will be relatively short-term in nature, but is that a year, is that two years? I guess that's the great unknown.
Do you have any difficulty with a one-year limitation, and at which point you'd have to come back and ask for an extension?
I would certainly think that would be reasonable.
Can I ask why it was done this way instead of what was the plan called for?
Um, I manage the shopping center. I'm not part of the, the planning or the construction team, but, um, what I've inferred is that, you know, this was a, a convenient location in a temporary spot for the Verizon store and subsequent back of that building that we're trying to lease, uh, for an enclosure. And it would be a, a good stopgap, if you will, until we could, uh, could follow the, the master plan. Um, like I said, they're, they're working in that area with the grading and the stone and all right now.
Could be in a different location. This isn't.
Well, the approved plan had two dumpster locations within this vicinity, um, one for Verizon, and then I'm assuming the other one was for Building P. Um, we had, uh, we don't have the approved plan, but.
And so, am I correct in saying that you ultimately want just one for the two buildings?
That's my understanding. It'd be a consolidated location.
Which makes more sense.
To serve both buildings.
Okay.
Get the Verizon plan.
I think this shows it. So, in the actual.
Cause there was a dumpster enclosure here, and then there was another one over here. Verizon plan chosen.
Can I fold your Doug? Is the actual site plan on there?
It was 18. If you can go to the 18 floor.
There we go. So, that's it. The one on the left is the approximate location.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That's correct.
Really, the hand is, is pretty much where it's been built, so.
So, ultimately, those would just be combined into one dumpster enclosure?
That's the, that's the plan, yeah. Of a, of a, of a more substantial finish, a permanent finish. Correct.
Right.
Sitting in concrete.
Terry, you comfortable with a year? All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll follow up with the letter and document this.
Somebody wanna, yeah, we probably should move.
I can motion send to other.
All right. Yeah, based on our conversation.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Sounds great. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Mauer?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
All right.
Next.
Uh, next is Heritage Christian Services at 2370 Atlantic Avenue. Um, it's a project update from the applicant. They have come up with a new, um, an updated plan for their project, which is for a daycare at the corner there next to the middle school. Um, originally, they proposed two structures. It was to keep the existing home that's to the east and build a new, uh, facility to its west. This plan is showing, uh, the house being removed and a reduction in the overall square footage of the facility from what was a combined 15,000 down to 11,300. Uh, obviously, a couple of things we have to change on here, like the exit road. Don't get hung up on that. The question here is, uh, would the board be accepting of reviewing this as a preliminary final application or as a second sketch plan? Um, in reviewing the sketch plan, the board was concerned about, uh, the congestedness of the site with both buildings, the parking layout, uh, at that time. This addresses it by having one building. Um.
Is this your project?
No.
It was a sketch.
It was a sketch.
Oh, that's right. We never took it as a sketch.
All of ours.
Yep.
If you want.
You're welcome to.
You know, my, my recollection is that, um, it was, it was essentially a traffic issue, line of sight issue, uh, safety of students issue.
Well, there's a lot of concerns.
Per se.
So, you know, it, it would seem inappropriate with this much change to jump right into a preliminary final.
I agree.
When this is a brand-new project, really.
Yeah. So, I'm hearing.
I agree with that.
Have a second sketch plan to review this size of a structure, the parking demand, um, traffic flow, so on and so forth.
Do we know if the occupancy of the building is actually changing?
The type or the quantity?
Quantity.
I don't know that answer. Um, I can ask Eric, who's in the audience, if it's gonna be reduced.
Health department requires a minimum number of square footage per occupant.
Yeah.
For these uses.
I would assume since the overall square footage is going down.
Going down, it's, the numbers.
Most likely, it's gonna go down a little bit. I was getting to the amount of, you know, traffic in and out. If it's reduced occupancy, then there'd be reduced, to some extent, traffic.
To some extent, yes. Um, but I'll leave it to you guys.
Yeah.
So, the consensus I'm hearing is, uh, bring it back for some, another sketch plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess it would be a revised sketch plan.
Uh, it'd be a new sketch plan application, cause you, once the letter's issued, we close the application, so we would bring in a new sketch plan, sketch plan application with that.
Okay. I think one of the things that we, that we wanna do when this comes back around is take a look at the dialogue that we had and the comments that we gave to the applicant so we can just kind of revisit, you know, the challenges that we thought the project had the first time around.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, all that information, we would bring that up, we would bring all that back, make it available to the board as part of the review process. I, I believe there was even some initial discussions with the state DOT that we asked the applicant to have, uh, with regards to, uh, site distance and the entrances. So, I know those preliminary conversations, uh, took place during the sketch plan review. Um, but we can communicate back to them that they can prepare a sketch plan application for the next available meeting.
Right. Okay, do we need a vote or something on this?
Um, it's really, it's really.
It's just a question.
It's just a request, so.
Okay.
No vote necessary. All right, that concludes that. So, last one is, lose my voice here. Uh, Penfield Square, quick update slash site plan, uh, modification, kinda technical in its nature, but we wanted to bring it before the board. Uh, they've located an area for a backup generator for the independent living building. And as shown, you can see 250 on the right, the highlighted area and the bubbled area is where the generator would be located on the far side of the parking lot away from the building, uh, be a gas-powered gener, uh, naturally, gas-powered generator with a level-two sound enclosure. We did receive some documentation on that, uh, in writing. It's also proposed to be landscaped as well. Um.
What does the enclosure look like?
We can pull that up in one moment.
So, this is a whole building generator, or is it like light-up hallways and stair towers?
Yeah, I think it's just an emergency, light-up stairways.
Yeah, the basics.
The basics.
For life safety.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
The basics.
Was there a mechanical engineer that said, "You guys need this in as far as building code basically to," or at least my understanding is building code to pour the stairways and...
Where you going, Doug? You had a special offer there.
Yeah, no.
What's going on here? You had that?
So, we can't open up anything anymore?
Still on computer?
Allison, I think we.
Feels like.
Budget.
So we didn't extract this file? I didn't say anything, it's kind of on me.
Open with Winzip? Or go to the Winzip?
Yeah, but it's.
Trial's expired.
Yeah, but can't you just right-click? Then go to the Winzip thing there, yeah, no, down, 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 down there.
Yeah, no, it won't.
It will, eh?
You can double-click and open one, but I didn't realize this was default.
Uh, I think they expect a color generator.
Let's just get the doghouse around it.
Yeah.
With a level, with the.
What's level two?
Yeah, so that's.
Level-two sound enclosure.
So that's for noise reduction, but.
Understood, but how much?
We spend an awful lot of time trying to get curb appeal on the two fifty side of these buildings, and then to have a utilitarian structure sit out there is really going to.
Excuse me for one second, I'll go take care of it on my computer upstairs. Keep talking, don't forget me.
Hustle up.
I'm fine.
Yes, do they have to put it there? Is that the only place they could put it?
Go near a propane source.
Does it put it there?
But they probably also want it away from, you know, that's kind of in the middle of nowhere, if you will.
I didn't see where it was.
Yeah, traffic going by.
All those trees.
Yeah, they're proposing the landscape around it.
Residential house right next door. No, it's not a neighbor right next door.
So there's a maximum coefficient of sound transfer from the generator to the dwelling units. That's why they're proposing this certain type of enclosure, but they're typically not very attractive.
So we just need to make sure.
Certainly not changing for the street side of a project. Generators are typically.
Yeah.
Unless you're wet in the road.
In the front yard.
No, wet, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and put there.
You don't know what the enclosure looks like?
Use that in front of your home.
A lot of other facilities will put some sort of barrier fencing, stone, kind of like what we talked about for that dumpster. Don't put that around the generators. Well, I think they'll put around whatever we ask them to put around. Well, I'm saying, for example, I've seen versus just having it sitting out there. Shrubs and this is a, couldn't be. NRJP, yeah.
Well, they can't put it over to the north because of the water. There's a sixty-inch water main that goes through there.
Yeah, so I got it there.
I saw you got it as soon as I sat down. Good little exercise there, call a work session for a reason.
So we know what the enclosure looks, I mean, the generator, the key thing here, I guess, is how do you screen it and make it look attractive?
They had a landscape plan provided.
If it's got you on that location. Right?
NRJP and PF. They propose chapnines, flowering cherries. Why couldn't they put it between the two buildings? Chapnines.
Hey, well, if you put it between the buildings, you're interrupting the entire pedestrian corridor there, so I think they're trying to isolate it.
On the northeast.
Scroll up. Between which building?
The commercial building and the end of this building, like further south. It's two-part.
It's going to have parking spaces, so it's probably fifteen feet right there, right?
Yeah, we got ten by eighteen spaces, so nine, nine by eighteen, yeah.
Fourteen foot long.
Do you want more details?
Is that what our engineers think that's the best place for?
What did we?
It's going to go someplace, right?
What did Paytech put up years ago when they did a backup?
Paytech or paycheck?
Paycheck, I'm sorry.
I don't.
Panorama.
I don't know.
Okay.
Too long ago. But Terry, to your point, I wanted to address that, like, in terms of a location, when you think about mixed use, I mean, you're going to have all your activity in the middle, and yes, while there probably won't be a ton of activity during the generator's exercise period, is that something you want to see located, you know, more west or more east?
It can be, yes.
And why can't we have it subterranean, where it doesn't stick up above the ground at all?
So a vault.
You got grates or something above it, and you got plants and shrubs and stuff around it.
That's done often, it's done, it's done often.
Don't they even have, they gotta have prefab vaults that they can.
Sure.
And they got a big excavator, dig a big ass hole and, oop, sorry.
You should, a large hole, you should pause between those two words is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, whatever.
So the vault would be.
Put it underground and have it not noticeable from.
Maybe we should tell the applicant that.
Or why can't that happen?
The board would either like to see the generator contained within a vault or to see renderings showing how they would visually obscure the generator with a look that's consistent with the rest of the project.
So take the landscape plan, make it three-dimensional at that point.
I don't think we're asking for landscaping.
Well.
I think we're asking for a structure that would be landscaped or a vault.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's going to be an above-grade structure, the structure itself has to be attractive enough so that.
Completely consume this.
Yeah, they're, are they proposing fully mature landscaping to go around this type of structure? Or is the structure going to look nice enough to?
Three to three-and-a-half inch caliber for the trees.
Free to start.
VP is, I don't know, and NR is a three gallon.
I personally like the idea of the vault. And I don't know why that's, you know, there may be a reason why that's not feasible, but I'd like to know what that reason is.
Well, that's the question, it's done all the time, fire pumps and generators are placed in vaults all the time.
We'll ask and get that back to you. That's all we have tonight.
Okay. Anything else, people? We will adjourn. Thanks, everyone, for your attendance and your input.
Yeah.
Have a very good weekend and think that's good, take a cruise, go to next Monday.